All right, welcome everybody. It is Tuesday, November 8th. It is seven o'clock. We are at the Lee Middle and High School Library. We are in a virtual meeting room per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law C 30A section 20. This meeting will take, take place virtually via Zoom for those committee members and attendees choosing to access in that manner. The rest of the general public is invited to attend in person. I'm going to follow the meeting to order pursuant to MDLC 30A section 20. I'm hereby informing all of the attendees that a good audio recording is being made of them meeting. And we are going to be led for the pledge of allegiance tonight by our elementary school students Juliana and Kuscherak and Kara. Thank you so much. You did amazing. I love that part of our meeting. Next up is our mission statement. The mission of Lee Public Schools is students have the opportunity to develop the social, civil, and critical thinking skills to thrive in an ever-changing world. Brenda, could I trouble you for a roll call? Here. We are all here in person. That's exciting. All right, next up on our agenda is the approval of our October 11th, 2022, Lee School Committee Minutes.
I make a motion to accept the October 11th, 2022, Lee School Committee Meeting Minutes.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Of staying.
Public input. Residents of Lee are invited to address the committee regarding assignments on this evening's agenda at this time. Comments are limited to three minutes. Issued rates will normally be referred to the administration or a subcommittee of the school committee. So I just have a quick little thing I want to ask for. I didn't know I was going to be able to speak. But my name is Zach Kelly and I'm the active spokesperson for the Lee Public School Program. And I have something here tonight to make a request that we reconsider or make an exemption for the boys' basketball season for the required COVID vaccine status, the COVID assistance, the health for 2022, 2023. I'm not here to kind of deflect from this even made or the value of the COVID vaccinations. The baseball program currently has several respective individuals that have voiced their desire to volunteer their time and help with the basketball program. In this specific case, these individuals were employed or taking compensation from those school. And the vaccine requirement, the vaccine individual is not allowed to participate in this program. I believe to get the government's requirement, our mutual interest to back it from some individuals that would have a deep deal with themselves and their backs, basketball programs certainly seek help and have not been able to find, on the fall guide, individuals participating. And then the current guidelines, I also know that just yesterday, EMC Fisher looked there requiring for, they're afforded to be vaccinated as well. And things re-signed, I expect your support.
Thanks both, thank you.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you. All right, next up is the chair report. And the only thing I want to talk about in this chair report is I just want to clarify for the general public, because I think there's a little rumor out there, that we are still in Zoom land. But we, as a committee, made a determination last spring that we would go back to meeting in person. And that any of the committee members that wanted to come through Zoom, or the public that wanted to meet through Zoom could do so. But anybody in the public or committee that wanted to come in person could come in person as well. And I think that that may have gotten lost for some of the public, because they may not, may or may not have come to the meetings. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public, the general public was aware of the fact that you can come in person to the meetings, or you can join via Zoom. The opportunity is there for both. I know it's not on our list, but do you have anything to report back from MAS?
Oh, yeah, great conference. Brenda was there. That was awesome. Brenda, you went there for the whole day for administrative assistant. Do you have something you want to talk about?
I just wanted to thank the support and having the opportunity to even if I was still at the state. And I didn't know if you were aware, but I've had, it's the Council of School Committee Administrative Personnel. And I was elected secretary. So we're just trying to find ways, you know, to maybe like lunch and learn via Zoom. And, you know, the progress was great network and actually we did a few sessions and learned a lot.
Well, thank you for taking the time to go, Brenda.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. Lot, lot of school committee members though, right Brenda? Like it's amazing. Yeah, it was a good time with the, the state auditor. She's retiring, so she was one of the guest speakers. There was a great DEI speaker, Manuel J. Hernandez. He was Fernandez. That's why they don't put me in. I spent a lot of time trying to say Mopta Garcia.
Yes.
But great, great DEI sessions. That was one of the themes. On, you said, Fernando. Do you know him?
Yes.
We should have him come speak. No?
No, he was offered to facilitate the, the conversation of who we are, but he's not available. He'll be in Reading that afternoon. But he has tapped one of his colleagues in Cambridge to, to come out for that event.
Okay, yeah, because his colleagues were very nice too. Yeah, so great, great stuff. If ever you guys get an opportunity to go to the conference, you should, even if it's just for a day, it's really worth it.
Well, I, we appreciate you giving more time to be, to be our president, so thank you for doing that.
Well, I handed it over.
All right, next up, our student representative, Jacob.
Very excited to announce that the drama programs hard work throughout the past few months will finally be performed. This Friday and Saturday in the auditorium for Shakespeare's Midsummer Night's Dream. I've been working, I know a lot of friends in my class have been working very hard these past few months. It's been great to see that. And I also have a performance at Shakespeare Company Lennox on Thursday. Really excited. It's about 25 students are in the, in the play, so it's going to be very nice. As well as wrapping up our fall athletics. Football, golf, and soccer have finished, but volleyball is playing in the round of 16 state tournament. Actually, right now, and Cross Country enter state qualifier meet this weekend regarding. So hopefully, hopefully go back this year as a team and maybe some individuals as well.
That's very exciting.
Thank you, yeah.
I don't know if you guys have ever gone to any of the Shakespeare plays over at Shakespeare, but it's very different than seeing it here, because all the kids who participate in Shakespeare sit down in front of the stage. And they react to the plays in a very different manner. It's amazing to watch. They like kiss and boo and cheer. It's, it's amazing to watch. It's very, very different to watch. I mean, it's here, great here, but it's very different out there. If you haven't been, I highly recommend it. Take your little ones. They will think it's amazing. My nephew's much preferred watching it there than watching it here. We really are. Thank you so much. And I wish you the very best. All right. All right, superintendent's report.
All right, thank you very much. Oops, not what I wanted to do. There we go. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chair Larmour. I appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Bianco, for that update. Enrollment, as of November 1st, we are, we're, we're struggling along. We've seen a number of families move out of Lee. And we know that the, sort of the economy, I think, is pushing back and against homeownership and the ability to buy with interest rates. And I only say that because for every one we lose, that's an important loss, whether they're to a surrounding community, the other end of the state, or a surrounding state for that matter. Every one of our students is important and every one of them helps us maintain our viability and our ability to program effectively for all. So I'll continue to keep you updated and share this information with you on a monthly basis. But we are carefully monitoring what the impact of this will have on our FY24 budget projections. Today, election day, professional development day for our staff. There was lots of countywide PD. Appreciate the efforts of Burke 12 to organize lots of professional development opportunities for our colleagues across the county. We also had some great site-based sessions. And, and I, I emphasize this, we balance need to haves with want to haves. And we really gave our faculty some voice in what they wanted to do and allowed them to guide their professional development, to meet their individual professional development programs. And to make sure that they were set up for success moving forwards. We had lots of teachers focusing on math and our continued of HMH. And lots of faculty getting together to work, to plan, to organize, to write curriculum, and to assess where they stand right now. So proud of the efforts of everybody today. MCAS data analysis, simply a reference point I shared with the committee of more thorough analysis of the, of the MCAS data following last month's meeting. I, I think it's really important to note that the LEA was very helpful in giving some feedback on what their thoughts were about reasons for some of the performance challenges that we may have had. But that, I welcome that, I think, and I shared it with you. And while I may not have called it out explicitly in the analysis, it was built into that. And then the building level analysis will continue to happen over the next weeks and months, and as an administrative team, we'll continue to look at it to make sure that our students are well-prepared. I appreciate the feedback that I got from individual members on that. The concerns that you raise are valid. The questions that you have are valid. We continue to work hard to make sure that we're setting our students up well for success. A quick athletics update. You heard Mr. Bianco refer to some of our efforts here. Football did lose a hard-fought game against Kip Academy in Lynn on Saturday. Volleyball, at last check, was down two games to one, or two sets to one. And the bleacher install is going to begin on Monday. We had originally targeted, we thought it was going to be Friday. And then some clarity came, came to about the fact that Friday is a holiday. And so, so Monday will be delivery and install will begin shortly thereafter. We expect that to be complete about December 1st, no later than December 1st. So we're looking forward to an outstanding winter season with the bleachers, brand-new bleachers, and an updated gymnasium. At-home COVID tests important for our community to know that we, the district has secured them. We'll pick them up next Friday or Saturday in Pittsfield. We will have tests available for all students and staff. We'll distribute them prior to Thanksgiving break. And then they, they will be a two-pack. Students and staff will also be able to test prior to returning from the holiday break in, in December. So our efforts to try to keep everybody, everybody safe and healthy in our schools. And while long gone are the days of me giving you an updated COVID number every month, we still need to be mindful. People are still getting sick. We want to keep as many people safe as we can. In a couple of weeks, we will be, three weeks, I guess, three weeks from today, we'll be hosting Who We Are, a Chronicle of Racism in America. And this is to the point that Mrs. Wadsworth asked about Mr. Fernandez. I, I did reach out to him through my colleague at MAS, Tom Scott. We engaged. He's unable to facilitate the conversation that will follow the screening. But he did put me in touch with Mr. Raymond Porch, who's a colleague of his in Cambridge, and he will come out to facilitate that. I want to thank my colleagues in Lennox and Berkshire Hills for co-sponsoring the event and assisting with the costs related to it. But it is free, is open to the public. And if you just go to Eventbrite.com, you can find tickets where you can secure those. And we hope it's a packed crowd. We also, Mr. Bianco talked about a Midsummer Night's Dream. And here's just a visual for those people who are at home, again, Friday and Saturday at seven o'clock here at Lee Middle and High School. And for those of you who want an extraordinary experience and go to Shakespeare and Company in Lennox on, on Thursday, the 17th at 6:15 PM. It is a good fundraising opportunity for, for the costs that are associated with this. But a huge thank you to all the students who have spent a ton of time getting ready for this production. A weather update. I know it was 70 degrees yesterday. But when I looked at the weather forecast for next week, believe it or not, there is snow in the forecast for maybe an early morning snow. So a reminder, a reminder to families, delays and cancellations will be made as early as possible to allow for planning. Calls and emails will go out, but just remember that not every meteorologist's prediction is accurate. And I am not a meteorologist, and I don't even play one on TV. But we do make our decisions based on the safety of our staff and students and their abilities to get to and from school safely. And so we, we, I work with my colleagues and surrounding communities, so we try to get all on the same page. That doesn't always happen, but we do our best to be unified in our, in our approach to whether we're going to delay or cancel. It should be noted that every effort is made to not have an early release, because we find that to be most disruptive to families for childcare purposes. Parent-teacher conferences are Thursday, so it's a half-day for students. There is no school on Friday in honor of Veterans Day and our Thanksgiving holiday. There is no school on the 23rd, 24th, or 25th, and we hope that everybody gets a chance to spend some time with family and friends.
Thank you. Everybody have any questions for us? All right, there's no questions for our superintendent. I will move on to our principals and directors reports. And the first step is to meet up with Lee Elementary School.
Our quarter one ended October 28th. We prepared it when out November 4th. It's hard to believe we're quarter one. Last Wednesday, we had our November Walk to School. This was a particularly special one for me and for all the participants. We joined several schools across the nation who are walking this month to school in honor of Ruby Bridges. A civil rights icon who in 1960, as a six-year-old bravely walked to school to help integrate an all-white school. Participants wore purple, and they had Ruby Bridges signs. The Berkshire Eagle was also there, and we ended up with a front page article above the fold detailing that. Pretty proud of that. It was a special, special event. Special thanks again to the Lee PD for helping us keep all of the walkers and participants safe. Jen Carlino, Julia Warner, and Lauren Burton for making this happen. A lot of behind-the-scenes work. Kiwanis Club was also there, and we supported their Stuff the Stuff initiative by bringing a lot of non-직원. We literally built up the back of an SUV, which was wonderful to see the community really, in Ruby Bridges spirit, rally together to serve the community. Again, it was just a special event. Our sixth grade, sixth grade band and chorus went to UMass to a multi-band concert. Lots of performances included the UMass Band Concert, as well as the Jazz Bands there. We have our Veterans Day gathering coming this Thursday in person. We're going to try to livestream that on Facebook. I'll be sending something out to the community, giving a link. This is something new we're trying, and we're also in person for the first time in two years, which is very exciting. The Lee PD and the PTO last month did a really great job with the trunk or tree. It was very well attended, very well received by the community. Chief Brown from the Lee Fire Department ran an assembly for students in K through 2, a couple of weeks ago. There would be fire safety with the help of two of the firefighters in full year, so that the young kids can get used to what that looks like. So real emergency, we wouldn't be scared. We actually held a lockdown drill last Friday with the support of the Lee Police Department, one of the few that we're going to do this year. I'm sure Jordan, as might as well, will speak to this, but the two entrance foyer's were recently painted, and it's a really, really nice upgrade. I encourage everybody to take a look if you've not seen that yet. As Superintendent Richard said, we've got our parent-teacher conferences coming up this Thursday, 1:00 to 4:00. It's Friday the 7th. I encourage you to reach out to our office staff to schedule that if you'd like to. And our fifth grade is continuing their composting project this year. We're taking food waste from LES lunches and composting it on-site. And we're using that soil that's created in our community garden to help grow food, which a lot of that food ends up being drawn into our local food plant. There was a lot of good community service that is rough. And last but not least, our life skill program is continuing again, grade three and four are currently participating in that. Our school adjustment counselors are teaching the lessons, and we're using the life skills curriculum.
Did we have any question for Tim?
No, just like I said, offline really, but the floors are great up there. I pull up one day, I was like, hey, can we get some paint? It looks phenomenal, guys. Really proud. I need you guys to be too. It looks really good.
Any other question? Perfect. Thanks, Tim. All right, next up, we have Greg Fergenti from Lee Middle and High School.
Thank you. It's been a very busy month at LMHS. We had several great field trips that I want to mention real quickly. The first was a field trip to Interprint in Pittsburgh. This was sponsored by the Berkshire Workforce Board. Basically, 10 students from all the South County high schools were able to go to each school and explore against manufacturing facilities and. They were pretty impressed. It's quite an operation of the. We also had a group of seniors attend the regional college trade at BCC. The middle school, the entire middle school, both grades seven and eight, on the teen building height on Bear Town Mountain a couple of weeks ago. And the entire ninth and 11th grade classes attended a William Theater performance in cattle crew at Shakespeare. Which was also very well received. We have our newest group of National Honor Society members inducted a few weeks ago. So I want to congratulate Maria Jose and Iago Mills, Town Ben, Corey Chen, Jackson Becker, and Jolie Pagioni, Emily Folean, Kira Johnson, Sharon Kelly, Isabella Kotak, Cooper Maloney, Alan Nie, Robert Nielsen, Mary Ann Resta, and Dearly Turoza for the hard work and dedication it takes to get them to the National Honor Society. A few weeks ago, it was my pleasure to give the classes of 1971 and 1972 a tour of LMHS on Saturday. Many of the alumni have not been down there since they were around. So it was kind of a shock for them. I remember there was no middle school and there wasn't a library in that background. And it was awesome to hear the stories that they were telling about rehab volunteers. The class of 71 that weekend was extremely generous and offered to pay for the restoration of our World War II memorial plaque in the entrance. So on the left there, you see the beforehand condition of the plaque. And just today, I received an email with a picture on the right hand. Yesterday, the restoration, I'm going to ship it up each week.
Who did it, Greg?
It was a family firm down in Pennsylvania. Took some time to find somebody who would actually take on a small job like this. And they were, they were great. So she'll be back next week. We'll put her back in the entryway up there, so she'll be ready for the next, you know, 70 years or so. But thank you to that class of 71 for, you know, for the pain for that.
Their generosity is amazing, so thank you.
Jake and Mr. Richard both mentioned Midsummer Night's Dream. I do want to mention that the Shakespeare Company performance is along with the stream then CPS. So somebody can't get either ear this Friday night or Saturday night, and can't get them next Thursday evening. The entire festival of live streaming CPS. So you can see a chance to watch all of 14 of them in all schools. And just today, we found out that 17 members of the class of 23, the one more, John and Avi, are at the scholarship.
Wow.
The scholarship is based upon the MCAS performance and provides a sizable annual scholarship to state colleges and universities, and should students attend the state college. Just as a sign of 17 students is just under 30% of issues senior class. Congratulations to them, and that's all.
Anybody have any questions for Greg?
Well done.
Let's operate this. All right, next up, we have Jen Martin, the special education.
Um, I will, we, all the teachers participated in the different wide TV that went on today. And we're doing various things all over the counties. Some of them are more here, some of them are elsewhere. We hosted a few things here. The ELL, our ELL teacher from the elementary school actually has been training here. I think we have 19 participants from the county, so that was really nice that we were able to do that. Our parent professionals were able to do crisis prevention intervention. Half of them did that. The other, they had done it in August, and they also did first aid CPR. And I just wanted to really thank county ambulance. They provided the people who do the first aid CPR. And we've gone through a few different providers over the last few years. And the response both in August and today was just phenomenal. They really did a great job. They covered all of the topics. It does have a great teaching style, and, you know, they kind of kept them laughing and involved in participating. So it was really great. It's nice when you can partner with local people, and they've been great to us. There are still various special accommodations open throughout the school district. If you have any interest, please reach out to my office or Mr. Richard's office, and we're happy to give you some more information. There are postings on the website and on school spring, things like that. The next thing, we are for our three-year-old preschool program. We have done two days for most of our students for the first half of the year. And for the students with higher needs, they can come in a bit more. But all of the three-year-olds will be coming four days a week beginning in January to get them ready as they get older. So we'll be here four mornings a week. And so that's exciting. The related service providers are just very much excited about the progress that some of these kids with real needs have been able to make in such a small setting. So that's been wonderful. We have a number of students transitioning to adult services over the next year. And we're partnering with a few local organizations, including extra specialties in both Great Barrington and Hootson Sonic, as well as multiple different programs through Berkshire County. They're assisting the school districts and have families, and our families are able to have successful transitions. I also need to thank, we have some representatives from Mass, we have Commission, and the Department of Developmental Services that have just been outstanding. They've been working with us for a number of years. And it, I really feel that our students, as they turn 22, are really getting what they need when they leave here. So it's been a great experience for me. And the last thing, along with the report cards that will be going out, the elementary school district-wide, any student on IEP will be receiving progress notes next week. If you don't receive them for some reason, please let us know or contact your liaison.
Does anybody have any questions for Jen? Thank you. If all it's needed gone out over here, bless you all.
All right, next up, we have Gordon Meyer with.
All right, next up we have Jordan Myers with Facility News.
Evening, everyone. Uh starting with LES, the uh playscape of the town refreshed after place up there uh you know, great. Um it's still ongoing. We're waiting on on the mulch, empty mulch for uh each individual playscape and the curtain will be taken off of that uh specific mulch. Uh the gym also at LES is scheduled for its annual screening over Thanksgiving, so that'll have a nice fresh coat for the remainder of the year. Uh as mentioned earlier, the front of LES was painted, the structural steel and brick. Uh what's to comment after that now is all of the exterior lighting, also black. Um and it's hard for someone to have that all cut up before, which will give a really nice impact for um, you know, district that's holding on to refresh. Um maintenance, well, the summer ground equipment uh is is completed. All the equipment is getting ready to go into storage. Uh vice versa, all the winter stuff is is out and ready to go. The truck is still the truck. Uh it's it's working in operation. It'll it'll hopefully get us through the winter. Um but if it doesn't, certainly, you know, I'll call if you don't want to keep that in there. All the athletic uh equipment is uh coming in from outside and uh going into storage. The fields have been provided their winter fertilizations and we expect all of the fields to continue to get better and better as we use them. Um what we started a year or so ago uh is going, going to improve. And probably peak on about the year five, because then you'll see it consistent, same field year over year, just really good uh thick lush grasses. Uh the timers of all exterior lighting have been invested in daylight savings times. Uh the boilers are fired up and heating systems are working well. The building matching system is a little dated, but it's 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 functioning. Um we were blindsided by uh Otis Elevator, who had a filter compliance exchange that cost him something. Um what it is, is a stop switch tube for firemen access. Uh the way it's set up now is uh if there was a fire in the building and the firemen took the elevator to a different floor. The door would automatically, once it got to that floor, open completely. So if there was a raging fire on the other side, that's no good for the occupants. So the the changeover, the compliance uh has to do with the mudboard features. So it is an eighty-five hundred dollar hit. There's no way around it. I want to try and negotiate it down. It's just the cost of the material can get done. We're scheduled, uh excuse me, we're not scheduled. We're waiting. Uh the bleacher installation, uh the super set is is starting to ramp up. We're keeping on form as that aggressive. Uh and all buildings are are healthy. The maintenance and material teams are settling in for the rest of the school year.
Okay, do you have any questions for Jordan?
Yeah, just the outdoor gym is at, when's that, if you saw us at that?
The outdoor.
Any other questions? Thanks, guys. All right, next up we have committee reports. First on our list is the finance subcommittee.
All right, uh we had our finance committee earlier today. Uh long, we had a long discussion about the warrants. And um the accounts payable, as you see on the screen, um was approved by the finance subcommittee of two hundred sixty-three thousand three hundred eighty dollars and um that little.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four cents. And on the right-hand side, you can see the description of what was what that money was addressed to and um everything is aligned in the the budget as well. So that is our accounts payable before.
All right, I will entertain a motion to the accounts payable.
I think a motion to accept accounts payable in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred eighty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second, any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Stripler?
Yeah.
And this is Warren.
Yes.
And the uh second warrant, warrant that was uh approved by the subcommittee was the payroll for a total of six point seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. This uh like the note says, includes the October stipends. Um again, this is all aligned with the budget.
All right, I will entertain a motion for the payroll.
How many motions for accept the payroll in the amount of six point seven thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-two cents?
Second.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes. Yeah.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
It's Jane.
Um Mr. Stripler?
Jane.
And Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
All right, next up on our committee report is the diversity equity and inclusion subcommittee. We'll have an update from them.
So we met um earlier this evening and did vote um for a chairperson and that is me, as far as speaking. If you're curious, um we had a couple of agenda items on in front of us. Uh I think it's probably the first time this committee has actually met. Um so the subcommittee developed a mission slash purpose statement. Um and we'd all, the three in, um Aaron, Randy and I all kind of submitted some thoughts ahead of time. What we came up with is that the our mission statement is to believe public schools are committed to an environment that is accessible and welcoming for all. Because it was kind of a short concise statement that really drove home that this is a welcome welcoming place regardless. The superintendent gave us an update on some in-service trains that's been occurring um along the lines of DEI. And that there are some contractual issues that are preventing a lot of that training from being, but uh from the full staff of the school receiving that train, but I'm not, I'm correct, yeah. Um so there are some contractual issues um that require us to pay staff extra. Um we had to have the full staff training, the I.
Or do it on PD day?
Well, that was the discussion is um is cafeteria, the 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 questions were raised about cafeteria staff, for instance, custodial staff, paraprofessionals. And so there's a trade-off. Uh so it's, if it's on a PD day, uh what may they not be getting? Uh oftentimes our paraprofessionals have mandated trading that they need to go through. That was the example that was used. Uh clerical staff, uh custodial staff, cafeteria staff generally are um obligated to work assignments during the traditional school day. So if we're going to do this in after-school hours, um with without there being explicit PD provisions in their contracts, we'd have to explore other ways to compensate them for their time.
Um and then the next conversation, most of the other questions, well. The next conversation we had was about uh political messaging, which the committee discussed in our last meeting in October. Uh we did have a brief conversation, um but then decided that it was the best interest of the DEI subcommittee to table the issue. Um as we all know, we are having a standalone meeting to discuss the political uh messaging issue that's in front of the committee. And that meeting is November uh twenty-second. Um it's being facilitated by NAST. Um and so the DEI subcommittee has scheduled a Zoom meeting um on December sixth at six PM, in which we will have another discussion about political messaging after our facilitated conversation. And other than that, I'll have you welcome.
Anybody have any questions? So just so everybody's clear, uh Tuesday, November twenty-second at seven o'clock, uh Glenn People will be here to do a standalone meeting with all of us. Um just to discuss the topic of political messaging.
Hmm, yeah.
Right here.
Right here.
And I I know they're not here because they're not members of this town, but do you want to thank the uh my my coworkers for covering this?
Yes, thank you.
I had pull a favor, but I'm I'm gonna be.
We can always go to stock.
I appreciate everybody getting back so quickly so that we can get that arranged and get that on the book. Um okay, moving on to our next agenda item, which is old business, and our first thing on that list is our custodial contract. So um I see it's being passed, so Andrea, would you like to talk about it?
So uh the um negotiation subcommittee met and met many times and was a very interactive group. And so here's a recap of what we changed in this contract. There is a salary schedule increase. We increased the wages to reflect the two, two and a half, two and a half. So first year, second year, third year. We added two steps to their salary schedule. They had five, now they have seven. We created a separate, separate wage scale for the ground supervisor. So we have a maintenance, maintenance, now ground supervisor, then the regular um custodial staff. We increased the wage for the maintenance technician. We adjusted the work hours to be the same at each school. We increased the clothes and work boots allowance by twenty-five dollars. We increased the sick buyback by ten days to sixty, so from fifty to sixty. And we increased the longevity from um eleven hundred, I don't know what it's from, but it went to eleven hundred, one year, fourteen hundred, seventeen hundred, twenty-one. We did take out year five, I believe. Yeah, so I know that sounds like increase, 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 lots of increases. This was the one contract that we asked for nothing, and Nicole really hit that home for us. Um this was a tough one. Uh everyone worked really hard um on this one. Uh this was tough. This was a tough negotiation. Um so, yeah. Not much more to say about that. Yeah.
And you had uh updated job descriptions with or an ask of of the subcommittee, so those are provided to the whole committee.
And we also had an MOU in there somewhere, right?
Correct, I'm uh.
For one individual, for additional supervisory, additional roles, not supervisor.
Go with one extra step in year one.
Yeah. So that will be a contract you will be voting on. If there's something you don't agree with or like to discuss, we are happy to go over those items. Oh.
Does anybody have any questions for the negotiation?
I don't have any questions. I used to have two statements or kind of my thoughts about this. Um you know, I I saw in the contract that the substitute janitor paid a sub fifteen dollars. And I, again, I think we ran the same issue when we were talking about our parents and other employees of the school. Very difficult to find people to come and work for you when there are fast food restaurants on, you know, in town and in the region that are advertising higher pay. Substitute janitors are just as important as our real, as our full-time janitors. They provide a service to us, and I think that paying them under that wage when it is um it's detrimental to the needs of attracting those people. I say that with an eye on the budget and understanding what that every dollar means something in real dollars.
So it was an interesting negotiations. I I would say that it didn't bring that. We rarely bring in subs, and when we do, I would say we'd probably pay them at a sub rate more than, but we could, we could address that.
We could and and to uh Mrs. Wildworth's point, it was decided uh on both sides not to uh not to deal with it because we haven't picked up a substitute, a true substitute custodian on a, on a one-off type of situation in years.
Yeah.
And so it was uh a a point that we decided to skip over in order to target the other things that we thought were.
Because there were so many other asks that we were giving.
I I understand. Um and then.
But I agree with you. I don't think people should be paid under minimum wage.
But um I guess my other point too is um, you know, the uniform allowance at two fifty, um you know, I you gotta think these people are walking around on concrete floors all day long. They're eight hours. They're not sitting. They're not. They are on their feet. And boots are expensive. Quality boots are expensive. So I guess, you know, I I defer your judgment, the the subcommittee's judgment on that, on that raise of that two fifty. Again, understanding where the dollar comes from. Um but I would just say that you we should be ensuring that we're allowing our staff, especially ones that are on their feet, cleaning and making good school, as clean and presentable as it is, and doing a bang-up job through a pandemic. That that we should be making sure they have the footwear, to have a long and healthy career at least.
I would concur. They also get, they also get, do they get, still get clothes, but they don't like, they don't.
They get poor shirts.
But they don't really long, so that's fine. Uh but I I agree about the boots. Boots are expensive, yeah.
So just how does this impact the budget, like?
It uh it it can be absorbed for uh the FY twenty-three, so for this current year. Based on what was predicted and budgeted, we've got uh room to to, it's, it won't negatively impact us, I guess. Right.
Other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the contract?
A motion to approve the custodial contract is presented.
And for the discussion. Brenda, could you take a roll call, please?
Mr. Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Stripler?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Just for procedural, for this, it's like, you know, we gotta ask if there are any questions, but then we get a vote now, ask discussion. So should the question be with the discussion or can it be separate? Okay, well, I just, I was just curious.
If you had more que, I think I presented it, and then you could ask more questions. You could have more questions, if you wanted to. Yep. We could have read the contract, too.
No, I know. I just, well, sometimes we do it one way and sometimes we do it the other way. I just curious.
There were a lot in there.
Yeah. Um all right, next thing on the agenda is the vaccination policy update. I think this got held over from the last meeting. From the vaccination, uh from the policy subcommittee, correct?
Yep, and uh and there were questions that some of the members had, which Mike looked into and basically to answer some of the questions regarding what the town helped, what they said is that um the opinions of actually to protect people, but also respect choice. And also, we pointed out that most places are getting way of mandates, which like happened at the DMC, which was in debate today. So they're solely moving away. It's not like, uh the trend is more mandates, it's less mandates. So that's up there. And also, again, uh we talked about primaries and resales, upper student states and staff states, but the very few were unvaccinated, am I correct? Or took uh in our schools or.
Everybody.
No, I'm sorry, I mean, sorry, my mistake. They're all vaccinated. There's very few, sorry, my mistake there. Um so that's what basically what it is there on the terms of uh of answering some of those questions.
Yeah, I think we took a vote last month and it was tied between tables this month.
And I can, from our discussion in the meeting as well, one of the, when we talked about this because I'm part of the subcommittee, so, and I wasn't here last month, so I'm going to say my two cents. Um when we talked about this to you, I don't even remember when we put this in fact, whenever we put this in the place a couple of years ago. One of the driving forces was the fact that students can be vaccinated. And so we pushed the adults in our buildings to be vaccinated so that we could protect the students in our building. Um and now students can be vaccinated, babies can be vaccinated, everybody can be vaccinated. And so it can now be parents' choices as to whether they vaccinate. It can be an adult's choice as to whether they vaccinate. And I think that we can now take that choice and give it back to adults. We can give it back to families. And we can give it back to whoever wants to make that decision or not make that decision. And so when we had that discussion during the policy meeting, it was that we, people now, anybody can make a decision as to whether they want to have themselves or their family members vaccinated or not, because it's available to everybody now. And I think that was, that was really the driving force for the policy committee making the decision to take away the mandated vaccination policy. That's my sense.
You can get seventy-five bucks if you get vaccinated right now.
Correct. So we're not saying go.
They give you a gift. I know, I missed my sentence.
So the point was, don't, we're not saying don't get vaccinated. We're saying it's your decision. There's a boost. That's my two cents.
I appreciate getting input of some of the whole professionals. Um I think my biggest thing was just making sure we had done the research around it and also thinking about those employees who are not working with us anymore because of that mandate. And just, I don't know, I think for me it was an abrupt.
I think it just came out of nowhere.
You know, I'll just re-lyrics with last month is that, you know, I I bought this. You know, I'm very, like I said last month is that, you know, I, I brought this, uh, recommendation for, uh, vaccination policy forward, um, whenever we did it. And it was purely out of a desire to keep our doors open and to make sure that we had our staff as protected as possible. Um, to keep them healthy and safe and to not, we were facing, you know, shortages of, of everything. Um, and I do feel a lot of, um, sadness that we lost employees. I feel sadness, um, that there are employees that would not have been vaccinated, but made the decision to retain, um, their employment with us. And I, I, I am, I am sad that my decision, my, my request brought that on, um, but I still stand behind my request and my decision and my vote. But I think that it is time to return, um, the power to the people. I think it's, it's, you know, any good government is going to make decisions to protect their own, um, and to protect their people. And then when the time is over, it's time to return that decision-making power. And that is what I am going to be thankful. Shouldn't have been our power in the beginning, but we had to do it and we did it. So. Necessarily.
I agree. Right? So.
Nobody wants to go.
I make the motion to eliminate the vaccine, vaccination policy as written. I second.
Any further discuss?
Can we say rescind?
Rescind. Yeah.
Can somebody second? Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Warren?
Yes.
Okay. Next on our agenda is, uh, another item that we, uh, discussed during the, uh, policy subcommittee, which was some changes to the LES handbook.
Yes, that one there is the dress code thing. It was um, correct one line on the dress code handbook. The original line is, oh, so I thought it was up there. Sorry. Original line is hats are not to be worn in the building. Excuse me, but when the halftime preparation can leave the building. And the whole point the subcommittee came up with, recommendation is to re-protect that line because that line seemed to be dated. Dated.
So we removed it back. And so at the high school, students are allowed to wear hats or hoodies. At the elementary school, we're not allowed to wear hats or hoodies.
This is just pants. So what's the policy on this?
I think they're allowed to wear any kind of gear. At the, at the elementary school, correct? Seventeen?
Well, yeah, we have not restricted, I think the student has something on that.
Correct. Right. So it was removing that language because before that they weren't allowed to wear anything. So we removed, we, the pol, the policy subcommittee voted to remove that.
But the, but it, the, the policy, current policy now has nothing to do about hoodies.
Right.
So when someone could wear a hoodie today, because it's not in the policy, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
But.
I, I, I think that there had been some enforcement of hats and hoodies, but the language in the handbook.
Right.
It got broadened.
So are we going to change the language to hats and hoodies? Are we just saying just hats?
Striking.
We're striking everything. So there's.
So they're allowed to wear hats.
Correct.
And they're allowed to wear hoodies.
They're allowed to wear.
Any hat, any head covering.
There's going to be no language.
It'll be in the handbook about.
It'll be mute.
So what's the language? Circle?
It's where I have my purple band. Second bullet goes to the bottom.
Hats are not to be worn.
Right.
Something was calling.
It's just remove the, the blurb that says that they couldn't wear any. And.
So just eliminating that standpoint.
Eliminating anything about.
So anyone to wear whatever they want.
If I could, it's to bring, it's to bring it in a line, in, in line with the, with the policy is at the middle in high.
You know, i- is this going to create a distraction or issue with the bathroom?
So if it does create a distraction, someone wears a, a hat that does disrupt the classroom in any way, we can ask them.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion so we can talk about it?
Go.
I make a motion, we strike the, the line that reads hats are not to be worn in the building. We doing all of that? Okay, hats are not to be worn in the building. Definitely.
Any discussion?
Uh, it's not clear to me.
Where?
So.
You, you can wear a hat now.
So if someone does wear a hat, it's that we'd ask them to move, remove it.
If it's a distraction. If it's a disruption.
The same thing as the hood goes. What constitutes a distraction?
A Dr. Seuss hat that's ten feet tall would be a distraction. Well, if it's in the way and I can't see through it.
It's not a policy. You're just saying, we can do whatever we want. We'll just go fuck that word.
This isn't a policy.
It's in the handbook, right?
Right.
It's not a policy.
So. So what we have to approve the handbook?
We do approve the handbook.
It's not a policy. It's a handbook.
I thought this would be more of a thing about baseball caps, not hats. I thought people could wear hats. They can't wear hats in the elementary school. Those poor kids.
They're in that at the high school.
Yeah.
Well, there's an equity issue there.
That's exactly it.
Well.
No problem there with the hat.
No. No. I mean, occasionally there's something, there's something that's wrong, you know? It goes against other items in the dress code. All right, all right. I see. I now enters.
I was about to want to wear a beret.
Sure. And with your best life.
Here's the other thing. There were a lot of.
Right. And there's a lot of kids that would wear that a hood provides security.
Uh, yeah, I just have two kids in the elementary school and they.
And I will tell you that.
They didn't, won't care either way.
There are some schools where we have to write a hood into a student's five oh four plan or IEP or D cap because a hood is not allowed in the school building. And for a kid who's got anxiety or.
Fluorescent lights bother their eyes.
You shouldn't have to write, a kid has the right to wear a hat or a hoodie or those kind of things because of a sensory issue or an anxiety issue.
Sure. Okay.
Because then they, then you're making, that's not UDL. I just spent an entire day teaching UDL today and we're not doing UDL.
Gotcha. I'm, I'm.
What's UDL?
Universal Design for Learning.
Okay. It was a, a light thing, light rating. UDL. Okay.
Yep. Does that make sense?
Sure.
I just didn't know. I just don't know.
So the beauty.
But if there's no problem there.
And if this doesn't work, we could revisit it and by the suggestion of the principals to bring it back and add it back to the handbook.
Yeah. Like we had that.
We can always pivot.
Pivot on everything, right?
We're flexible like Gumby.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Brenda, how about a roll call?
Yes.
No.
Um, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, well, for the reasons that Andrew.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Next thing up is new business, um, and we have had a donation.
So, uh, as, uh, both, uh, Principal Martinuck and Mr. Meyer, uh, referred to the project that's underway and, and still in the works in terms of the updating of the playground equipment at LES. Uh, the L Y A, uh, as very generous partners and having a very much an interest in making sure that that project uh, can be fully funded and completed, uh, has offered a ten thousand dollar, uh, donation uh, to the Lee Public Schools to offset, uh, some of the costs for the fabricated mulch and curbing, uh, that are still required to be installed for those, uh, facilities to be fully functional. My recommendation to the school committee would be to accept that donation to be applied, uh, towards that capital project.
Did they receive a grant for that or is it?
I believe it's, uh, coming from their own, uh, guess.
I make a motion, we accept the L Y A donation of ten thousand dollars.
Any discussion? Brenda, can you do a roll call? Yeah. He, he beat out the call by.
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Strickler?
Yes.
And this is Warren?
Yes.
Can I just ask one question? You, you don't have to accept a donation from the nineteen-seventy-one class for restoration.
Though there's no. They're paying the vendor directly.
All right. Uh, next item is future business. Um, so we have our full Lee School Committee, Committee meeting on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, but we have our standalone meeting on November twenty-second at seven o'clock. Uh, with Glenn. This is our next committee. And then our last thing is adjournment.
Make motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? Brenda, roll call us out.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yes.
We are. Eight oh two.
Yeah.
Six P M with one.
So.